Once in awhile and make sure there's nothing that's real important, but as far as I'm concerned, they can all work from home until the seventh, it won't, it won't affect us the least.
Cause I know the busy office is gonna be, yeah, cause she's got planes and stuff like that. I don't know if a couple of days a week would benefit her or not.
Well, that's in the health department.
Yeah.
Okay. We don't have those laptops and so I'll need my staff to come in daily or something just to check. The thing is, we don't have to do anything except for the emergency stuff, but we just need someone to receive the filings to know if something's an emergency or not. So, we'll have to figure out a way to make that happen. We can either purchase a laptop and send it home with someone.
Pardon?
I could rent you one.
I think we'll, uh, we'll come in person or, or solve it remotely, but.
But don't you just come over electronically though? Were you looking online from home?
They do, not from home. We have to have, uh.
You can look at them, but you can't monkey with them unless you've got Odyssey on your computer.
Okay.
And you can only have that on a municipal machine. You can't have it on your home, which is dumb.
And.
And so we don't have one of those yet, cause it's never been an issue. We probably have one in the budget to scrape it together, but it's not been an issue yet.
I think you guys are handling your stuff pretty good. What are you guys are, I mean, we can't control you anyway, just, just come and do what you need to do.
Well, we can't control them, but we have to accommodate them. That's the difference, so.
Right.
We're low maintenance.
We wanna be able to do that.
Whatever you decide, it's not gonna hurt us one way or the other, cause we'll just come down and do it whenever.
Okay.
We've been looping in the health department. I guess who should our point of contact be if we're needing to bring someone from the outside into the building?
Oh, the health department.
And then we're always available by text or email if you guys wanna ask us something or tell us something.
Sounds good.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you gentlemen.
Who's up next?
Ms. Callie, anyone? My staff cannot work from home. I came in here to have a laptop, but my staff cannot work from home. Our work is, it is gone before it's coming up, before so much coming in, which is incredibly slow right now. Photo registration, photo, mail ballot, but it's still need to be processed daily, so I will come in and process the mail. Needs to do, I guess I might process what I do with staff.
Marriage license?
Uh, I don't know if that's considered essential, but.
I don't think it is, but I don't know.
I have been doing this, I'm reporting, uh, other counties have stopped it already, because they don't consider it an essential. Sunny enough. Uh, the election decisions are not being made in tomorrow, so, uh, all the counties are just waiting for directions.
Okay. Well, the courts office isn't essential according to this list.
And we, we need to be involved with the politics, processes, and to go between, between the prosecutor and the court.
Well, yeah, we're still being, you know, monitoring everything, and you probably need some help with your staff, don't you, to, where you gotta go?
We are in slow, slow right now.
Right. So, my recommendation to you is you come in and check what you need done, if you need somebody, call in.
That one taken care of. Thank you.
Thanks.
Probation.
Probation?
Do you need air from us? Basically, I mean, our functions that are deemed essential right now, uh, just our emergency on-call, whether that be juvenile or new arrests, uh, we can utilize that. Officers were on-call twenty-four hours anyway, so it's no different if we're here or if we're not. We need to uphold any daily function of the court. If they're not here, I, that's, that's off the plate. Um, we're continuing to monitor vendors. Obviously, we're not having to come into the courthouse. We're doing that digitally through telephone and email.
What about your house arrest week? How are you doing that?
Um, Renee is doing that. She has the ability to do that remotely, so honestly.
So you just need to come in when the court's coming in for juvenile or something like that, and that's just you, cause you're just a juvenile arrest?
Basically, um, you know, I think we're at a point right now where we, we can, you know, until this is over, we can work from home and we can maintain the office and we're back to full strength.
Sounds good.
With your permission.
Cause we don't need a lot of people running in and out, most of them.
Lauren, you alright?
More than you, I mean, you know your office, you know what you need, so, we're just trying to provide office for you, set up, just, that works for you. Everything's slowing down, so, you know. This thing to get in fast, Carol, can you?
Sure.
As with the other offices I was talking about, I, I don't look at that, at this as we're here trying to dictate how everybody's gonna run their office, or think we're here to try to figure out how we can accommodate you to get through this, uh, which is entirely different approach than saying, here's how we're gonna do it. You tell us, and I think you've got it all worked out as the others have, and I'm, I'm grateful we had to do it. Appreciate it.
Excuse me, that you?
Thank you. Who's up next, bud?
Bob Lowery for the highway.
Bob Lowery. Now, for some reason, they list the highway part as non-essential. Now, I wouldn't, yeah, I wouldn't see it that way at all. That's an essential one that I can, or I can say. I could pass it back, Bob.
Mainly.
Can you get one of these two, or media during?
Thank you.
And the first question is, you guys are commissioners, you know, we get a lot of complaints on gravel roads, and puddles, just, and we've got a lot of them. And what we're doing as far as the gravel roads, guys, we're following stones, but it's very, and as far as the guys patching, I've got a hot box out, and then I've got another guy following and picking up, so they're not right yet. And we had a discussion with all the guys, take six foot four, no group more than six, and every night, I disinfect old chairs, tables, restroom.
What is your, what is your employee's main concern? Are they worried about catching it? Cause I know most of them are just out in the, I mean, it's just you guys yourself around each other.
That's, that's the main thing.
Are you monitoring people who are sick?
Yeah.
And you're not letting them come to work?
We had one, we had one that was all, that was sick Saturday, and he, uh, he was off Sunday and stayed off Monday, and he's now carrying a fever and every doctor said he was okay to.
Joyce, what do you think of that?
I talked to, if somebody, somebody recorded it.
Is, so does your guys want to shut down, or they want to work? I know what they're gonna say. They want a vacation.
Yes, and if you do shut us down, I've got, uh, well, myself, I take all the emergency calls, and then I've got assistant Ronnie Logan, and I've got a couple guys. It's pretty dependable, but can help us out, and if we did, do go that route, the, the two guys that I got, that I keep Barnes and Terry Cozart, I'm gonna pick up, pick up each one of you, so we don't have to make contact, you know.
How far is this gonna put you behind if we shut you down for two weeks?
Sounds like next week's gonna be good weather.
I know, that's what I'm thinking.
I mean.
I, I don't know much. Well, let me ask the real professional, what do you ladies think on the highway?
They're outside in the air a lot, you know, I mean, are you working two in a truck or?
No, what, what I'm doing is where I need two guys, I have another one following the pickup. And then one, one stays in a dump truck, and the other one will shovel awhile, and then they'll switch off.
I think my personal opinion, for what it's worth, as a pregnant coordinator, I'd say a reason why they can't continuously work in that capacity. What do you think?
I think the bones are in separate trucks, and it'll be nice, let them have their windows down, come be in the air, they're less likely in the air and not around anybody. What's they gonna do when, I mean, they're out and do a specific job, not being around other people.
And then all our loaders, which we've got in different places where they load stuff, we put the thing of wipes in there, disinfectant wipes where they can all.
So basically, you, you work on this on a rainy day?
Rainy days, we've got all the stuff, and I don't know how long our budget will stay. All the stuff.
What?
And, you know, it's totally, and if you do go that route, there'll be no service provided other than, or if you'd like to trigger it down, or.
Would it be like a weekend thing on twenty percent? I think they need to stay working less than rain.
Those things you can do, they must be.
I hate to say that, but we've got a lot of puddles or gravel rooms that need to be attended to, they're getting soft.
I think we're starting to get a head on, on the gravel, which, but it's just something.
When they're too soft, you can't get out there, you do more damage than you do to help.
And we haven't put stone on them like we should have in the last few years, this year I'm putting.
I got a letter sent to me from a lady who were on twenty-nine, I think it's one hundred north.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
She was upset that we did not plow her road when the, the snow was down.
One hundred south?
One hundred south.
Yeah, by twenty-nine.
Yeah.
Did you address us?
And we went, we actually answered that, when it dried out, we went and put some on the, so I know for a fact.
I mean, there wasn't really much snow to plow off a gravel road, cause all they do is just turn the gravel.
She kept cold, kept cold, so it was in a small truck down there, to plow, which I know for a fact, plowed, we told them, you know, plowed, we told them.
In a situation like that, can we put like, just in this question, can we throw sand down, makes it look like you did something?
Spray sand would probably do it, and put on a saw on the, on the gravel road, saw, so.
Right, but that, but that, that way they would see it, that if something's been done and there's some traction control, cause I know the gravel road get really slick when it gets back. If you throw sand on top of it, then it looks like you've been there, cause you really can't plow that much snow off a gravel road.
The last snow we had to deal with on the gravel road too. It was wet, and the wind blowed, and we had to plow, and it just.
Yeah. Um.
But one thing I, I want to ask.
I think you just need to follow protocol when you're done, Bob. I think you've done a wonderful job.
Cause the guys, you know, ladies wondering if we do shut us down, are we gonna get paid, or? We've got three guys. I heard the governor's executive order, number eleven, essential infrastructure. The phrase essential infrastructure includes, but is not limited to the following, food production, distribution, fulfillment centers, storage facilities, and arenas, and sale, construction, not limited to the construction required in response to this public emergency, hospital construction, construction, long-term facility, public work construction, school, and maintenance airport operations, and it says, in addition, distribution centers, oil, biofuels, refinery, roads, highways, railroads, and public transportation, ports, service, security operations, et cetera.
So, would you please?
They're listed as essential, essential infrastructure.
I think you're doing a wonderful job. I think we got the blessing of the health departments, uh, or disaster related, keep doing what you're doing.
Now, if somebody gets come in sick?
They just have to go on?
What if, what if they don't wanna be?
They have to force them to leave.
If they don't wanna go home sick, they don't wanna take a sick day off?
If they're sick, they're supposed to stay home.
Yeah.
Anyway.
I just ordered by the phone, I sent one of my girls home today, and I sent one home Friday.
You've got some guys, kind of like a book.
Well.
Well, they got sick.
You gotta use it up.
Unfortunately, that's what the governor said, he said stay home, self-isolate, that came from the governor, not just from the preparedness, so.
So basically, you guys will have to monitor yourselves.
Yes.
Or make them come in here and get checked, make sure it's okay to work.
I mean, everybody's.
I think that'd be a fair, well, wouldn't it?
Everybody, everybody, you know, everybody, you're saying the time clock, that's the numbers, and six people in there at a time, but then after this, no time clock, not everybody.
I, I don't know who they are.
And haven't really been, you know.
Well, I think you could probably do away with the time clock for the next couple of weeks if you're there. That way you don't, I think that'd be a form of, cause everybody's touching close to that anyway.
I already did, I.
I think, I'd say from here on out until it's six. I'd say we do away with the time clock over there, and that's, that's a good way to.
If you're monitoring, you could, issue it out now or something.
Okay.
But today, that's a danger. Could be.
Cause, are you spraying the time curtain with the disinfectant too?
Cause first time I did it, I thought well, I would go work.
Yeah, I, I say you need to keep running and do your protocols, and no more clocking in and out, and if they refuse to go home sick, suspend them. Then a possible termination because of, we can't have that.
Okay.
I know the people wanna work.
I just wanna see what we should, you know, with, with you guys.
I don't wanna have to fire somebody, cause they want to work, because they're sick, because I'm the same way. But in a time like this, you have to think of everybody else's safety.
Okay, so we keep business just like it was then?
I think so.
Okay.
Take your, take your time, just take time, babe.
Keep them looking good.
We, we have been, I mean, you can ask Kelsey, like, after everybody leaves, I wore stuff down, and on over Saturday, and, and the bathrooms. So, I don't know, I just wanted.
So what can we do to help you, Bob?
Get us some more help.
Get us some more help.
We'll hurry down, where's that? Come in.
Right now too, but I think it's gonna be two more.
And your summer help's coming, right?
Yeah, so we're gonna be down four drivers.
They're just going somewhere else for more money?
Insurance.
What's that?
I said, we'll see if they get better. A lot of people come back because of the. No, I meant, I meant when they go, to see if they get better. I need to make someone else.
Sure.
Okay. Hey Ted?
It's Billy.
Ted, yes. Nobody else has their microphone on, except for you and myself.
I think you're good.
Sorry, I appreciate it, you guys.
Thank you.
Have you got our numbers right? Okay.
There's no problem.
Okay.
This has the microphone on, except the only one on is you. Well, there's only the auditor, you, Rhonda Hicks, Togo Hasenbeek, and then Joanne Winton, Jack Bakely, and there's one that says just user. And I don't know who that is, I. Well, not on my machine.
Okay.
All are, just left that, so there's one phone call that is called into this meeting.
Okay, I don't know who it is. It says you. That's all I, I, of the letter U.
They, they, actually connected by computer, but there is someone connected by phone call.
I've changed. I, I don't know what to do, okay, fine.
Great, who's up?
Um, I can sound like you may. Who does Mike have something, we are something, or the health department, you only have a clear?
We just wanted everybody to know, we're just trying times for everybody, just to wait them out. Uh, we're uncertain what's gonna happen in the next hour. We got a lot of support from Mike helping us, and, uh, you know, I've worked a lot of hours the past two weeks, Valerie's worked a lot of hours, besides the hours we write down, it would work, we get called all of the night, like Mike does, early in the morning, late at night. I had some lady call me seven times, I finally got her to talk to, but, um, search department called me at seven o'clock Saturday morning, because they had a gentleman that had an amputated leg and needed alcohol, and he couldn't find any place, so, I, officer came to my house, got what I had. I had a new big bottle in this moment, but I gave him what I had, and then, uh, I did, was able to find this eight more bottles. I've got some, but, uh, we're, we're hanging in there, trying to keep everybody well.
Supplies holding up.
We're, we're passing them out to about everybody.
As quick as we get them, we're going out.
We have requested from the SNS, which is.
There are two requests, sources that we're running through, health department, EMS is running through EM resource. I'm working on all other first responders through WebEFC. We've got our requests in, they've been accepted, no timeline on when they're gonna arrive, or if they're gonna be granted, so I, we're still reaching out to commercial vendors. And I'm, I'm flying through the cash.
Right, um, I know Purdue tomorrow, my area is shut down, but I'm supposed to be working, and they're sending me all over campus to pick up their extra gown, masks, supplies like that, and we're bringing them back to essentialized location to be distributed out, so if you guys need that, contact me, and I'll let my bosses know what we need.
What I need to know is, family health clinics are desperate for, um, base yields, um, and their PPEs run low. They are owned by Purdue, and why is not, why is Purdue not giving them their supplies? They're coming to the health department.
That's my theory, but I know we're going out collecting all the extras in the lab.
Yeah.
Starting tomorrow.
I put it in a, uh.
I think they're all in the same shape because.
Yeah, I question that, because, and they're taken from our sources, you know, I'm not gonna, first of all, I'm not gonna let any, anybody in the county go without supplies if I can help it. I don't care if they are supposed to be funded through Purdue or what, if they need, if these nurses need to have protection, like, uh, St. Trilogy's supposed to be getting theirs, they keep ordering, but they're not sending the supplies to St. I'm keeping a running total of what I'm giving out to whom, so, um, we do have to fill out tracking forms with the state, so we can try and get reimbursed.
I say they need to contact Purdue themselves.
I, I told them to reach out to Purdue and find out why they're not giving their supplies.
All the labs and stuff, they're, most of the buildings are shut down right now. I mean, we have to call ahead and even get into the building, cause they're locked out, they're locked out.
So.
Now, we're gonna have a question. The material masks that you're seeing people on Facebook making all over, out of just fabric and elastic?
If that makes you feel better, that's fine. Are those useful, or are they? It's not gonna keep the COVID virus out.
They're better than nothing.
It's better than, yeah.
Surgical masks.
You know, I just didn't know. They're giving, they're, they're giving nurses surgical masks to take care of patients, cause they don't have any N95s. The N95 is the one that suctions around here. If you see people, you've seen them on Facebook, they got bruises under their eyes, because they're, you know, they have to clamp it down, some type, those are the N95s. Surgical masks, they just put over, loop over their ears.
We're, we're thick enough for respirators and all that, so, I'll talk to Mark, um.
They need, you know, I did, um, email Deb Mears, who's director of nursing over there, and Jen Lehman, and say, you need to be reaching out to, to Purdue and find out why they're not giving you supplies, but I've given them supplies, because I'm not going to let anybody be desperate for supplies, and they're gonna be unprotected. Because if they're unprotected, that's gonna trickle down to Doug and his staff, and we cannot let them be infected, because that's, that's all we have. And so that's, that's how I feel about that. They're, you know, I don't want him going into St. Me and not being protected, and those nurses need to be protected. And, you know, our residents, the elderly, Carol Lanner, and, and, and St. Health period.
Yeah, well, I think we, that's a million reason, we need to put Carol Lanner on lockdown.
They are.
They are.
They are.
I thought they were, we're looking for them out here.
Nope, she's been on lockdown. There was a resident who wanted to go home to her family, and, and the family really wanted her, and they said, well, we just want her for one night. I said, if you take her, you take her for the duration, but you don't come in and get her. They walk her to the door with her things, and that's it. Because that's what we put everybody on lockdown, and, you know, I feel bad about it.
Right.
But I can't take that chance. You see everybody on TV waving to their hundred-year-old grandma outside the window, it's the same, same thing. So, either she stays or she goes, but, you know, that, that's just the hard line.
And then you come back after it's all cleared, I think.
Yes, well, actually, I, I was trying to put my mother in there, she's in Florida, and I have a room secured for her, her manner, but I can't bring her up here, because it's closed. So, you know, I can't bring her and put her in there, so it's the same thing. You can't take in new residents, and if you let the residents leave, then you can't have, ask them, they can't come back, until it's all over. It's just.
First they got to school.
Yeah, it's everything, you know, it's all, that's the way it is. Um, something else, I, I do wanna ask, um, if one of our staff members has to quarantine, they've been asking, do we get paid for this, or do we have to use our sick time? So it's something I want you guys to think about. If they're told to self-quarantine, and then what if they are quarantined, then where are you gonna do it with all the other people? So, we gotta start thinking about that. You can't just think, oh, when it happens, you wanna start thinking about it now. What are we gonna do? Because this is what I asked two weeks ago, you know, the last meeting, what if we have to shut down, and who are we here? And another, um, question I wanted to put in your mind, and most employers, you have to have a badge, a badging system. So think about the next time, you know, it just may happen, everybody should have their own badge that shows I'm a courthouse employee with their name on it. So, if they do get stopped on the street, they have some.
Just not courthouse employees, all kinds.
Yeah, all kinds of employees should, yeah, some kind of identification. That's just a few things that, you know.
We used to do that at Purdue, I got a badge, you know.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, it's not something critical right now, but start thinking about these things, cause when this is over, we're gonna have to do an AAR report, and these are gonna be some of the things that we're gonna put in our report that, you know, that we want to try to do better the next time, and hopefully there is never a next time.
Well, I'd rather you didn't be at home and keep it, and money's already in the budget, so I said, okay.
And so.
That'd be mine.
How many people, so in this meeting, how many non-ess, how many essential people are going to come into work that are not, they're paid on, on hourly wages instead of salary? Did anybody keep track of that?
I didn't understand the question, so I didn't keep track of it.
Okay, the question is, so most of the people, department heads are paid salary, so it doesn't matter how many hours they work, they get paid the same. But what about people that are being paid hourly, and they're coming to work, but everybody else is sitting home, like the highway department? That, you know.
Highway department is, but, but you're not quite right on that. They're not, it depends. I mean, department heads are different than elected officials. Elected officials will get their pay, they do get a salary. Department heads, if they do not have the time, and they have to take this without pay, there's just different things that happen.
What I'm saying is, what's the incentive to come to work at the salary, as a, um, hourly employee, rather than stay home?
I'm the same one. I'm forced to work, and they just say, well, it's just part of your job. That's what they tell me at Purdue, it's just part of your job. You want you to come to work, you gotta come to work.
Hourly, you're earning the money, to make the money.
Okay, so, like, you're paying the people to stay home the same, right? The, that's my, that was my question, so they're paying the same stay home?
They don't seem, they don't seem fair, and they don't seem right, but that's what I'm going down there.
Um, our policy, um, states in the handbook, if there is an emergency plug, that if you have to come into this building to do work, you get paid for those hours on top of the other hours to your earnings.
It is actually closed, if there's an emergency closing, so if they're doing an emergency closing.
But we're not closed, we're just closed to the public.
Right, that's what I'm saying. If you guys determine that everybody who's non-essential goes home, which is what you have started to tell all of us, then we go home and we stay there, but if anybody comes in and has to work extra, they get comp time or paid on top of that. They get paid those extra hours. It is in our personnel policy.
That was gonna be on those, my, where I was just gonna talk, so.
These are just questions people are asking me.
We are not, I said, have the answers to, so I. All the other counties are doing that, but counties that I have seen on my email, after email after email, they are shutting down, per the governor's order. Get out, go home, stay there.
And they also are not paying those people. That's, some of them are not, of what the emails that I'm getting.
Most of them are paying all the full-time people.
No, no, I meant up and above.
Definitely. That, that's just what's in our policy, it's just in our policy, you know.
But if you're elected official, you come in and do stuff.
Yeah, you won't get that anywhere, so.
I don't either, and we're not granting.
Right, that means, that's what has to be.
In your situation.
Correct.
I think if you're gonna have hourly people, if you're gonna continue to pay the full-time staff members to our stay-at-home, and you don't compensate the hourly people who are working and not staying at home above and beyond, I think we're asking for some problems. So you either need to just make them all stay home, or you need to, you know what I'm saying? Say, oh, if you, if we need you, I mean, uh, if we need you and you're an hourly paid person, then you're gonna get paid your regular salary plus.
No, cause you're still being paid, you're just coming in and working a little extra. You're not working extra, you're still being paid. That's what I'm. You're not working extra, you're still being paid. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, but the people are.
It's just part of the job.
No, Steve, how long have you been at Purdue? If there's a, if there is a snow emergency or a snow recess, and they close the university, the regular staff members stay home and get paid, but the people who have to come in because they're essential, they get paid their regular salary plus time and a half.
If they work their own, their eight hours.
No, they get paid their regular salary, and if they come in and work four hours, then they get paid four hours of overtime.
Yes.
If you've not done it, or it's not happened, probably hasn't happened since you worked at Purdue. But, and that's the way other counties, I've had some same email discussions with county treasures. That's what they're doing in other counties.
Yep.
And the health department has to tell them we don't have a choice.
So I think with the high, like the highway department they're talking about is continuing to work as normal. If, if it's really not essential, and you're not gonna compensate them above and beyond their regular salary, just think long and hard about that, because you might be, you might get some pushback about that.
Huh?
Essential.
Well, sure, Mike.
This says.
That's off the executive order.
The executive order says.
Their technical infrastructure.
You're saying the highway department is essential?
Under the executive order, page four starts right there.
I don't think it matters whether they're essential or non-essential. The fact is, if you're shutting the, the other offices down and paying the people to stay home, the people who you have continue to work need to get the extra compensation.
Basically, that's what I said, is I think that should be, does it make sense, Mike?
That's probably an attorney question.
Yeah, we're ready to be honored.
I just wanted to say that we're, from the real estate person who's done with, she helps with the taxes and get, and the taxes are to the treasurer, they're out of our hands, so she is only gonna deal with deeds. We don't have deeds coming in if the recorder and the assessor are not there. I mean, they can come in through mail, but we have to have all three offices. Also, if there's a split, we have to have area plan. Um, claims are all done. We work hard. They, everybody dug in and got the claims done that are for April the sixth. The only thing, yes, the checks need to be written. We can't write them until April the third. So if everybody is at home, I guess I can come in. I will do, do that. There's no problem with that. Uh, the only thing that I think is essential now, till the end of April, end of March, first of April, is payroll. Cause our next payroll will be April the second. And the other thing I, well, she's already explained what I have about the any extra pay. That is on page twenty-eight, I believe, on your, uh, in your, well, page twenty-six, an emergency closing. So if you wanna look at your personnel policy, she is correct on that. Um, but we have to be close, close to the public. Right now that we are meeting people at the east door to pick up our claims and things, but that doesn't have to be done anymore, because they can keep them until April sixth. You know, because they're not gonna be giving them until April the seventeenth. Um, the other thing I'm concerned about is FMLA is going to be changing, is what I've been told. And it talks about, um, if someone does take FMLA to go home and take care of their young kids or their elderly grandparents, um, they get two-thirds of their pay and not working at all. So that's another thing that you need to really discuss with Ted and, and look into. Working from home, I have the capability of working from home if I wanna do maintenance and all this other sum, but I, our systems aren't, aren't working at home. Payroll, I do, payroll is probably the most sensitive thing that we do with all the delicate sensitive information. I don't believe that should be a tech line job. So that's where we're at. I can't remember anything else that Rhonda said, except for.
Ted just gave me a message. Each body decides what is essential. The governor left that decision to the locals. Some functions of highway may not be essential.
Some functions of O'Highway may not be essential?
Yes. Well, it sounds like since O'Highway office is gonna be closing anyway. Except for the health department, EMS, multiple to shut the whole courthouse tonight. That way we don't have none of this. Hey, you gotta pay me extra because I came in early. You're elected official, you need to come in and check yourself and another night we're shutting. Until April sixth. Can we come back and have a meeting that day and decide?
Rhonda Hicks wants to say something too. She's on, on here, so.
Who's that?
Rhonda Hicks.
Okay.
Here she is.
I'm here. Hear me, Beth?
Yes.
Beth, okay. Um, we're kind of working in color at our building, um, where me and my part-time Mikey County employees, we are governed by a board of supervisors as a special district of the state. So we do have state rules, county rules, lots of rules that we have to follow. And we are a small office at this point in time. USDA has, uh, blocked down the offices, but they have key dark service agency and natural resources conservation service as essential delivery functions. And they are functioning, they are functioning as normal. All their deadlines, everything are the same, which means they've not stopped. We are not taking people in the office. Like I said, the doors are blocked. What my board has decided today, as long as the county doesn't see a full-time issue with it, is working, um, me teleworking from home on Wednesdays and Fridays, which is totally doable. Um, I'm, I'm able to do this in case of a federal government shutdown. And that way, my part-time staff can come in on Wednesdays and Fridays. She assists with government payments, big work processing for, um, the USDA services. So that is kind of what we have set up. We can hardly really stop operations on treasurer as well as reporting secretary. We want, uh, farm equipment and have a lot of cost share programs for the ag industry. So the essential guests, we keep running, but I can operate from home. And we have low, um, employee status at the building. At this time, um, National Association of Conservation Districts, along with USDA, got together in Washington and decided that we are allowed to stay open, have one part of our representation at a time. So we could have one FSA person, one NRCS, one ISDC in the building at a time. And, um, if that helps you, if you don't wanna shut the courthouse down, you might be able to rotate staff. That way, everybody is treated the same. That's what some of these entities are doing, is you're at home. Otherwise, you take your shift, keeping office hours, even though the doors are locked. So that's where we're at. Um, I don't know if that is something that you're, care how we function or operate, um, that our doors are locked with us still operating.
I know at one time, Kelly, you had said something about rotating the people two at a time or something like that.
That's what other, other courthouses are rotating staff and lanes, make sure they're all contaminated.
And they also have done that in the auditor's office in different. In different county auditor's offices, like, say, on Fridays, the real estate person comes in and they're gonna do all their work or whatever, and the claims are maybe on a different day, so they're not in here at the same time. Um, that was just some suggestions from the auditor association.
I think maybe we just need to shut it all down, except for the department head to come in and check the building, and then check yourself, and go home. Except for, you know, you gotta do your payroll. I don't know how long payroll takes. You and your first step can do that together, or will you just do it yourself?
Sorry, the health department arrived, the ones picking up the mail.
She's sick right now.
Who else did we drop here? And I'm gonna just put a sign on the door and return.
I got deliveries, buddy.
Yeah, we have SMS. I got my first SMS delivery, it was COVID virus, blood card. That's how much.
So we can just put it like, we have an redundant, have them come and do it themselves, when they come in and?
I've been, I've been getting the mail, or the health department has been getting the mail, bringing it up to me. And then I put it in the mailboxes in my office. It's already bundled up. I mean, I don't have to.
I mean, if I get the department head to show up, there's gotta be a department head. You can't be an employee, because I don't wanna interrupt this issue while I've worked and I didn't work. You come in and you do your, your fifteen, twenty minutes, what you need to do, and you go home.
Fifteen to twenty minutes.
Whatever it takes.
Thank you, Steve. The mailman texts me every morning and says, I'm on my way, and I go out and wait on him, and I switch the outgoing box and take the other one. He doesn't come in, and it's saying there's, signs on all three doors that says, any deliveries, call the auditor's office, so.
So I'll have to change that.
And we meet them at the east door.
So do we need to let this mail sit for forty-eight hours because it might have virus on it coming from somewhere else?
We talked about that on the news, but I don't think we decided. They, they were talking about whether virus was on mail or not.
It's on there.
I know, and I think actually, Dr. G, I've been very concerned about that because here in a few weeks, we're gonna start getting lots of mail coming from all over the country.
Right.
So, yeah, I think.
I think we just need to.
I'm interested in that research, and I'm fine with letting it sit a couple of days, as it sometimes does anyway, when we get.
Right.
Really deep into it, so we should have a quarantine.
They're all talking about, all, everybody but elected officials and the department heads. They're the only ones that come in and do their thing and, and just.
The Department has. Health department.
Well, unfortunately, they have to be here. That's what we do for them.
The jailers, the sheriff's department, the, uh, ambulance.
I know they're all gonna, but they, they knew they were going into this, and when they come to these jobs, I hate to say that, because that's what they tell me.
The department heads fall under page twenty-six.
Really? Well, here it is.
That's different. Elected officials and department heads are different.
Right. Keith, can we shut down for two weeks? It's faultless, sanitized.
There you go.
We're good? We're good.
But he would get paid.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Up and above, up and above. That's what she's talking about.
Why, do you need to know if it's his salary?
No.
No, what about salary?
If we shut down, all the hourly people get paid, is what I'm understanding.
What'd you say, sorry?
If we shut down completely, the hourly people get paid.
Right, and it's questionable about some of these hourly people that already have established hours. So that is something that I would have to check out. They have established hours. For instance, GIS has established hours. And if she can't work them, I don't know. I need to check that out. That's something I did not think about.
That's Earl's question.
Yep.
How many hours do you do that?
Beth, just Rhonda, where would I probably call this?
Four, four hours.
As I have.
Four, we pay to pay.
On some things, federal grants and other items that I am not technically a department head, sort of.
Right. You call underneath your board. I, I recommend her to do what her board says to do.
Against her.
And I'm fine with what she does. She's out there at her phone right there, basically. What's the general consensus? What do you guys want?
She might not be in this building, but she follows our rules. Like, when we close the courthouse for snow days, her and the, um, extension office follow what we do everywhere. Is that right, Rhonda?
Yes, that is right.
I was just checking the seat there, so.
I agree.
My department is fine. I'm gonna take care of what needs to be done. And my deputy's gonna stay home, and she's gonna get paid, right?
Yes, sir.
I'm happy with that.
Yeah, I'm fine with coming in and checking what I need to check if I need.
Why are you doing my data?
Data's in, in rehab center. She fell and broke her leg.
I didn't know that.
Yeah. It'll be all need for the next, forever, so, bye.
So that's, uh, how is that gonna work for her, I think, because she's gonna want to, about to be on?
It's gonna be a while before she gets that.
Yeah. I'm honestly, I'm not, I'm not worried about it.
There's a lot of people in this quarter that are not worried about that.
Yeah, I'm not concerned, I'm more concerned about not dying.
You're the law.
And if you let somebody stay home for a week, you're gonna.